Good evening. Our April 14, 2022 Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our invocation and pledge will be given by members of the Spring Hill High School Honor Society. Attending tonight, we have Kaylee Montgomery, National Honor Society Secretary Senior, Senior Kylie Hudson, National Honor Society Treasurer, Senior Alexis Grubb, National Honor Society Historian, Junior Shane Browder, and Junior Abby Karen, who is Park's Director, Scott Karen's daughter. So, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Please rise as they come to the podium.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that may affect our community members. Continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the greater glory of you and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming tonight. We appreciate you being here and enlightening this chamber with your young hearts and your young minds. We thank you so much. And hope you seniors have given your essays in for my scholarship. Have you all done that yet? Ah, huh, okay. All right, very good. We have some presentations tonight. First, we will have a proclamation commemorating April 27 as Sexual Assault Awareness Prevention Day to the Women's Center of East Texas. I'm going to read the proclamation and then we'll meet up front. Whereas, the Women's Center of East Texas has requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize April 27, 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Day in the city of Longview. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Day calls attention to the fact that sexual assault is widespread and impacts women, men, and children of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds in this community. Prevention of this abuse must be a priority by working together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. And so now therefore I am, by the authority vested me as mayor of the city of Longview, do proclaim April 27, 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Day in Longview. Ms. Holly Bruce with the Women's Center, please come forward.
But thank you so much for bringing this, you know, and every year we do this, but it's got to ring more and more true every year. The more you say something, the more something will sink in. And nothing could be as important as this because sometimes we forget sexual assault doesn't just affect women. It affects children, it affects men, it affects people of all ages, ethnicities, races, cultures, just as you said. And it's true. And so we need to be very conscious of this because the more conscious we are of it, the more we can try to prevent it. So, thank you for your efforts. They never go unnoticed, you know that. It's a hard fight, keep up the fight, okay? Thank you for all you do for our city. We love you. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Aon Coil Products Day. Whereas the mayor by proclamation recognizes April 14, 2022 as Aon Coil Products, Inc. Day in the city of Longview. Aon is one of Longview's largest employers with 540 team members and a 487,000 square foot facility. Aon is a publicly traded company and representation of female leaders. Starting at the top, Aon trends higher than the national average with women making up 29% of its workforce. And whereas Aon has been recognized as a mosaic, top-inclusive workplace as a W company by the 2020 Women on Boards for having 20% or more company boards seated, held by women, and has received the Corporate Champion Pinnacle Award. So now therefore I am, by the authority vested me as mayor of the city of Longview, proclaim April 14, 2022 as Aon Coil Products Day in Longview. Joining me, come on up, we have Stephanie Reagan and Doug Wickman. Come on up. How are you, sir?
Good.
How are you?
Good.
Come on up. Okay, first off, Aon is so important to our community and we know how much companies like this mean to our community. 540 employees, huge building, products that go all over the world. You all are awesome. And to be inclusive of women as we should all be in all races, sexes, all things, that's what we should all be striving to do. And you are doing it in exemplary fashion. So, we thank you for number one, being in Longview, number two, being inclusive, and number three, just keen to do what you do and keep up the good work. We appreciate you all so much. So awesome. Thank you so much, buddy. Thank you so much. Thank you all so much. Makes you short. Okay, now we have something a little bit different, a little uncomfortable. We're going to have a presentation by Ms. Elizabeth Ross with Longview LISD. So, please come to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. Every month, Longview ISD prints The Longview Voice. It is our district newspaper that has over 15,000 in circulation. We're very, very proud of it. One of the reasons that we are so proud of it is that we have an incredible editorial every month by Mayor Mack. And we feel like this is very important because it allows kids, students of all ages, to connect with not only our mayor, but a great logo alum. So, we submitted one of the editorials to the Texas School Public Relations Association Star Awards. And the award for Welcome to Strong View, Texas, received a Silver Star. And so we wanted to thank you for your monthly contribution to The Longview Voice, but also we wanted to present you with a little certificate.
Well, first off, thank you. I'm not used to getting, I'm used to giving, but I appreciate it. And I thank you for the Longview paper letting me do that column every month. It's such a joy to me to be able to write that column. I have a lot of help with it, don't think it's just me. I have lots of help. But it does give me a chance to connect with those kids. And then I know that their parents are reading that newspaper and other people are reading it as well. So, I think it's important to be in that position and to be able to do this. And I really enjoy it and I appreciate the recognition, but that's not why we do it. You know, we do it because we want to do it and we want to make the kids realize that, you know, they could be standing up here one day just like I was, or like I am, because I was in their shoes at one point in time. So, thanks to LISD and allowing me to do that and I want to keep doing it. And don't cut me off, okay? I really enjoy doing it. Thank you so much. I appreciate you all. Thank you so much. I really enjoy doing that a lot. Thank you. Okay. We have one more, Mr. Clint Thomas.
My name is Clint Thomas. I'm the current master at Pine Tree Masonic Lodge in Pine Tree. Every once in a while, we pick out someone in the community that we feel has done a good job of building the community up. And it just so happens that, Mr. Mayor, you're the guy for this award. I just want to say that on behalf of Pine Tree Masonic Lodge, we appreciate your leadership. One thing that I've always noticed about you is you always praise others. You don't take credit for everything. And you don't go, you don't go about your business trying to tear others down. You're always trying to build others up and I really appreciate that. Just wanted to honor you with this Community Builder Award.
It comes with a complimentary cardboard carrying case. I appreciate, I appreciate you very much. And I do appreciate your kind words and I do appreciate the recognition. But as you know, this is not a one-man job. This is a team here and a team sitting out here. Everyone's sitting out here, standing out there, people you can't see behind the scenes. This is an effort that I think we have the best team anywhere. And I hope it shows in our whole community because I think the employees we have, the staff we have, the council that we have are so receptive and so involved in the community. That's what makes us special. And to be recognized, I appreciate it very much, but it's really not me. It's just, but I appreciate being recognized. So, it is me, that's me. You just did exactly what I'm talking to do. Yeah, it's not, it's not. But I do appreciate the Masonic Lodge for recognizing. My dad was in the Masonic Lodge and that means a lot to me, getting an award from you guys as it is. So, thank you so much. Appreciate you, sir.
Is it missile?
Yes, it's a very nice. Thank you very much, sir. Have a great day.
Let me just take just one more minute just to reiterate what I've said. You know, it is very humbling to receive awards, but you know, this is a, it's such a special group that we have here and out there. And that's really, and when I say out there, I mean Longview. Longview in general, our citizens, our citizenry, our, every department we have. It's just so, I'm thankful to be here and thankful to be a part of this whole effort. So, thank you all very much. Okay, on to business. We are now to employee recognition. These are the things I like doing. Okay, we're going to recognize Longview Transit. Longview Transit, Longview's public bus and paratransit system was recently honored by the Texas Transit Association with the Outstanding Small Urban Transit System Award of 2022. In October of 2019, Longview Transit completed a $1.7 million transfer center, Longview's multimodal transportation center to coordinate travel with both Amtrak and Greyhound. A few months later, COVID-19 struck and Longview Transit took advantage of the slower pace, a reduced ridership, and the idle labor force. During this time, Longview Transit replaced an aging fleet of both buses and support vehicles, installed a 10,000 gallon onsite fueling station, a bus wash pavilion, a camera and bus tracking system, and an awning to protect the paratransit fleet. Last summer, Longview Transit received a rare zero-deficiency finding by the Federal Transit Administration during their triennial review. The system also operated without any accidents throughout 2021. So, tonight, I'd like Scott Lewis, General Manager of Transit, Longview Transit, Tequita Dudley, Director of Operations, Finney Alvarez, Director of Maintenance, and Ebeth Shaple, Management Assistant, please come forward. Come on up, gang. Okay, I'm going to just start out first here by saying, everyone said it would never work. Transit would never work in Longview. I remember when I was on council when this came up, I remember when it was discussed, they said it would never work. You all proved everybody wrong. It doesn't only work, it works exceptionally well. And I thank you for your efforts and what you do. This is just an example of how you all take things and take it to a higher level. And you do it over and over and over again. I appreciate it, the people who ride the transit appreciate it. Everyone in Longview appreciates it because even if we don't ride it, I appreciate what you do for somebody else who can't afford to go there without you all. So, bless your hearts, thank you for what you do for you. The recognition is awesome, but please keep up the good work because we need you so bad. You all are so awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you all. Keep it up, keep it up, buddy. Thank you all. Awesome job. We are now to citizen comment. I have no speaker cards. We will move on to consent agenda. Any items council like pulled off for separate discussion?
Second.
If we have motion of second, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. We are now to zoning. We'll have a public hearing to consider application S-2202 filed by Henry Page. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Mcfee. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for an existing single-family dwelling located in General Retail Zoning District. A specific use permit is required to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. There are several single-family dwellings located to the north, west, and south of this property. The applicant would like to bring this property into compliance with the current zoning requirements and build in addition to his existing house. Currently, this section of George Ritchie Road is being widened to five lanes. With the widening project, TechDOT has acquired approximately 28 feet of the front of his property, therefore making the house approximately 3.8 feet away from the property line and also rendering his garage useless. So, the property owner would like to build a new side-entry garage that's situated 25 feet from the new property line. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. Planning and zoning commission and staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This still requires public hearing, which is now open. Any questions, Ms. Choi, or comments? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
David, do you have a question?
No.
Okay.
I'm going to move.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Public hearing held to consider application Z-2206 filed by initial Patel. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 2.3 acres from Single Family 2 to Town Home Zoning District located on the west side of Horseshoe Lane, north of Magnolia Lane. Planning and zoning commission along with staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This also requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions or comments? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing to hold to Z-2207 filed by Selwab Investments. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone from planned development multifamily and single-family 4 to general retail located at 2453 and 2455 Northeastman Road. Eastman Road is classified as a principal arterial roadways, which retail uses are appropriate in this area as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. Planning and zoning commission along with staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This also requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions? Mr. Carpenter.
Angel, this is the request for the addition, the rezone, so they can put the addition back there.
No, sir. This gentleman, I'm not sure what he's trying to do, but it is where Christmas School is located currently.
Oh, okay.
Well, they were located and so he has this property under contract.
Any other questions of Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Public hearing, application S-Z-2208 filed by Selwab Investments. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone from planned development multifamily and single-family 2. Oh, I'm sorry, got the wrong staff report. The applicant is requesting to rezone from planned development multifamily to multifamily located at 2457 Northeastman Road, which is directly north of the previous zoning case. Eastman Road is classified as a principal arterial roadway and multifamily uses are appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. To the north of this property is a existing multifamily development. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. Planning and zoning commission and staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any question of Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Public hearing held to consider request filed by Aon Coil to abandon a 50-foot street right-of-way. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to abandon a 50-foot street right-of-way known as Ford Lane in order to incorporate the street into the Aon campus and limit access points to their site. Easements for utilities and access will be secured for this abandonment prior to filing the deed and release. City staff has reviewed and signed off on the proposed abandonment. Staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
And this requires a public hearing as well, which is now open. Any questions of Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. Pleasure as always. We are now to items of community interest. Mr. Carpenter, we start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. A few items of interest out in the district. We are still planning to go on the road with the road show on May the 24th. District 1 will be out with staff, will be out at Gregton United Methodist Church for town hall. Number two, next Thursday, the 21st, the food pantry continues at Gregton. First and third Thursdays of every month, no pre-sign, just go and pick up the goods. Number three, probably one of the funnest things I've seen happen. We got a group together back in the early part of April and went out and really focused on the area around Birdie Park. I have never in my life seen the sanitation department have to haul as much stuff as we moved out of that 20-block area. A big thanks to the police department, sanitation department, keep Longview beautiful. The neighbors, I mean, we had people that came out. And a special thanks to the Letourneau soccer team. How they showed up, I'll never know, but they were really appreciated and we got it done. Great deal. Future event coming up, May the 22nd, will be a Sunday. Be a citywide effort and we're going to have the police department and the fire department. And we have about 600 motorcycles that will be here in town. They're doing the run for the wall. They're driving motorcycles from Ontario, California to Washington, DC. They will be with us on May the 22nd from approximately 10:00 in the morning to 2:00 PM. They will be buying fuel while they're here and lunch and just fellowship. And we just want to put on, Mayor, a really good show of our town. We're great, they're coming through here. This is a great cause and I'm just taking a real interest in making sure this goes in the right direction. And, that was the last slide, right? Thanks to city staff, you said it, and I just can't be thankful enough to Dwayne and Mary Ann and everybody that was involved last week. As I told you Saturday night, you know, the odds of water and internet in the same week are pretty strange. I also like to compliment you again on the video. I thought that was an amazing piece of work and how you ever got all those people together at one time. I really enjoyed that. So, here again, thanks to staff and everybody. I was just really, really impressed. I had one interesting phone call. I had a guy that called me from my district that was most upset with us because we turned this water off over a $7.45 pass-through balance. And I said, "Sir, I'm not wanting to disagree with you, but we turned off 80,000 people's water." So, he was a lot better than that. And last but not least, a reason for the season, a Happy Easter, everyone, staff, all the citizens of our great city, and just have a wonderful weekend. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Snoddy.
Good evening, everyone. Community Health Corps will be sponsoring Champions for Change Golf Tournament on Monday, May 16, 2022. For more information, please contact Patty Brady or Tequita Dudley at the office, 903-758-2471. And as well, as Tim said, I would also like to thank city staff. Amazing job stepping in. I heard nothing but great things. And that was awesome to hear. So, no one really complained about the water being out because they knew the staff was working to get the job done. So, Happy Easter as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snoddy. Mr. Wade.
Just a couple of things. Just another reminder of Juneteenth, it's a national holiday this year. We'll be moved from Broughton Recreation Center to downtown. So, just continue to look out for advertisement and things of that sort announcing Juneteenth this year. And also, I was fortunate to attend the groundbreaking ceremony for Starbucks coming to South Longview. Be right at Estes and Interstate 20. I want to thank everyone involved that was able to make that happen. Developing that area has been a big interest of mine and to see things happening there and a new McDonald's happening right next door to it has been really great. And that's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Excellent job in that development. Yes, sir. Mrs. Shahar.
I would make a motion to excuse Mr. Pertle.
We have a motion to excuse Mr. Pertle. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, ma'am.
Nothing else for me.
Mr. Wright.
Well, as I've said, coming in fifth, sometimes it's, everybody's already stolen your thunder. But I would like to thank Dwayne and all your folks for the wonderful job you guys did. I'm sure it was many, many hours and you did a fantastic job getting the water back on, so thank you.
Mr. Mcfee.
We have a few things to talk about, just real quickly. First off, scholarship application window for our scholarship closes this week. Actually, we're going to leave it open until Monday since the 15th is Good Friday. So, we'll leave it open until Monday and then the application is closed. Then we will announce our scholarship winners quickly and have them in the meeting in May at some point. So, learn more to apply at longviewtexas.gov/scholarship. The Learn to Swim Summer just around the corner, which means our Learn to Swim classes are back. Learn more and register today at longviewtexas.gov/LTS. The Chautauqua Festival, first time in seven years, Laura. First time, you got it right. Longview Public Library will hold that festival from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Saturday, April 23rd. The festival celebrates the rich and diverse culture of Longview and includes live music performances and more. Everyone I've ever talked to that's gone that has just thoroughly enjoyed it. So, make time to go out if you don't have anything else going on and enjoy that Chautauqua Festival. Okay, the big news, of course, is the water main break. And that, I as well will reiterate how thoroughly impressed I was with our city and the response that we had. And I want to just take a moment to say, you know, we never can anticipate disasters such as this. It's how we handle them that define how we are and what we are as a city. And I also want to just take just a moment to say how thankful I am that we made a decision that has paid off in huge dividends by having an assistant city manager. Do you all realize that our city manager was out of town for excellent reasons, as he should be with his family? And Mary Ann stepped in in that situation and handled the situation without even blinking an eye. Our communication line never shut down. Matter of fact, I was so abreast of what was going on, I felt like I was out there working with the guys. I knew when someone sneezed, when they took a coffee break or whatever. But the communication was outstanding and this shows why we changed this organizational structure to the way we have it and it's already paid dividends. I hope we don't have to see that in action many more times. I don't want any more disasters, but if it does take place, I feel like we're in really good hands because I feel like this could not have been handled more professionally by our staff, by our public works department, by the people who were out there doing the job to get us all back in line as quickly as possible. And I know it was a huge comfort to you, Roland, to know that things were taken care of in your absence. And so I applaud you for having the vision and insight to make this change and allow the city to function the way it has functioned, the way it did in that time of need. So, good job all the way around, greatly appreciated in all aspects. I want to take a minute to thank Brookshers and Dollar General, who supplied huge amounts of water for our citizens in truck after truck after truck. Brookshers just stepped up without even blinking an eye and that's a community partner right there. So, I'm just going to tell you, everybody that screams, "We want another grocery store in town", you need to be supporting Brookshers because I'm telling you what, they supported Longview when Longview needed support. And I thank them for that. They stepped up, as well as Dollar General and many other people. And also, I want to mention the additional duties that Richard Yackley took on as his first week as a new public information officer were also key to our communication throughout this water main. And we appreciate you, Richard, and the job that you
and the job that you've taken on. And, you know, I think for the first time, we've put out information in Spanish, which we have never done that before. And once again, that shows where we are evolving as a city in our government, and I think we're evolving for the good, not the bad. So, I appreciate that and the job done by everyone involved. So, and just one more thing, I want to applaud Mr. Wright for being here tonight. David, I know you're going through a tough time, buddy, but we appreciate your service, and your being here means a lot to us, it gives us strength.
Well, thank you.
And with that, have a good Friday, Happy Easter. We are adjourned.